Good evening. I'd like to welcome to everybody to the April 11th River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kristy, grab a roll call, please.
Beersett.
Here.
Bealock.
Here.
Carroll.
Here.
Downey.
Here.
Morrison.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Thank you. Next, I have approval of the minutes for the March 28th meeting.
Can I move approval?
Second.
First, second on meeting minutes, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have approval of the bills with Mr. Morrison.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, I make a motion, we approve the bills, the amount of $2,140,212.46, subject to the comp.
Second.
First and second on the bills, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll move on into public comments. If there's anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to talk about, now would be the time, come on up. Just, yeah, come on up and, there should be a sign up sheet there too, if you could sign. No, you can just wait till he's done. You should be able to sign in.
Sign up sheet, but no sign up pen.
Oh, pen. We can't afford pens. Russ, you want, you want to wait till your thing comes up, or do you want to do it, you want to talk now?
Uh, I was instructed to talk now since our thing is part of the consent agenda.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is Russ Corpola. I'm the Executive Director of the River Falls Chamber of Commerce. I reside at 205 South Grant Street in Ellsworth, Wisconsin.
Power delivered.
What is this? I think I might have dialed 911. Sorry about that, anyways.
Um, I'm here tonight to do two things. One, uh, and first to give you an update about, um, the Bluegrass Festival, which will be occurring in about 10 days. Um, we, um, as of tomorrow, will likely call it a sellout at 1,200 tickets, which is a 400 ticket increase from last year, where we sold 800 tickets. Um, the venues are all ready, the bands are all ready, and so you should see, um, lots of extra people coming into town for that festival. Um, it, uh, about 80% of our ticket sales are from people not from River Falls, but from the greater, um, upper Midwest region. So we're very excited to have that go on. All the hotel rooms in town are full. And, uh, we're, uh, starting to refer people to some of the hotels that are close to us in the Hudson area. So, um, it's a dramatic growth of this event over the last two years, and we estimate the economic impact for the event through the Department of Tourism to be about $150,000 in that, in that one weekend. As far as my comments go for our River Falls Days, Bacon Bash, River Dazzle, especially rent requests for the entire year, um, our request is largely the same as it has been in years past. Uh, we want to thank the city staff for their, uh, due diligence and working with us as we vet that, that agreement, uh, but it is largely the same as, uh, last, uh, last year. Um, one major change that you'll see in 2023 is we'll be using a little bit more of the upper parking lot on Saturday of River Falls Days. We have a, uh, three performances of a Hayward Lumberjack Show coming to town for River Falls Days, and we'll be offering that as a free family performances in the, uh, upper parking lot on Saturday afternoon. Um, Bacon Bash will continue to be on Friday night and Saturday. Um, we beta tested selling strips of bacon last year, um, very successfully, and so we'll have a full Bacon Central, um, where we'll be selling, um, all kinds of different flavors of bacon, as well as the live music and all the other food booths, um, that will have bacon featured items, so. Again, we want to thank you for your support. We couldn't do it without the city's help, the city staff's help. Um, over the years, it's been a tremendous partnership that I think benefits all the citizens of, uh, River Falls. Uh, be sure to stay. If there's any questions, if you come to that part in the consent agenda, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thanks, Russ.
Thank you.
Okay, come on.
Okay, I just have a list of issues. Um, I've been a resident here at 623 Oak Knoll Avenue.
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Michael Krantz. I'm located at 623 Oak Knoll Avenue in River Falls. And, um, I just have a list of concerns. I've lived in that residence for, I think, going on 17 years. And I've seen sort of a pattern of things happening that involve mostly the university, traffic issues in front of the, in front of our house on Cascade Avenue. And, um, just on this, on the street in front of, in front of the house on Oak Knoll Avenue in Hillcrest. I know I had emailed the mayor a couple of times, and he suggested that I, I do come here and sort of state these issues. And I have them typed up here. So the first issue is, I would like to make Hillcrest and Oak Knoll no parking. I've had cars go into the driveway and almost hit us. I've had my bike, and my bike trailer has been stolen. A sign, a slow sign with, you know, one of those green guys. So if I was out there with my daughter, you know, so nobody, so people would see, that was stolen. I've had, just recently, we've been losing a lot of, um, branches off the big pine trees in front of the house. And I cut them up with the chainsaw, and somebody stole the pile of wood. And I had no trespassing signs, which I, you know, really, I thought that was a sort of extreme being in the city. But also, at the same time, with these issues, I thought, you know, what else should I do? And so I don't have those signs, but I'm thinking of putting them back up. Uh, but another thing is people smoking cigarettes, walking by when I'm outside with my daughter, loud stereos, bass, sub, you know, those subs that cars have from the students. I think some of them just park on the street, and then they just... It was like three years, every night at 9:00 PM until the next day, until 10:00 AM. It would be like a loud bass drumming noise, and I called the police, I don't know, a dozen times. They, I didn't meet with any officers. It was mostly through COVID. And it would, it would go through the night, and I don't, I still don't know what it is. I talked to the university staff. They checked like the new air conditioners, um, the, the CVAX and everything, to see if that was it. And it's just sort of this ongoing issue, and I, you know, I really don't know what to do at this point about that. But another thing is policing the Cascade Avenue. The, the trucks go constantly, they go around the roundabout on Sixth Street. And then they just, they just go. It's like Cedar, you know, Cedar Lake Speedway, all day, back and forth on that road continually. And it's, I, I've, maybe I've seen the police there maybe a couple of times, and really, I don't know. I, you know, I've suggested to the mayor to put up a sign, you know, some signs. I, what I really suggest is just closing that whole street. I mean, it's that, I'm serious, it's that bad. I think you should just put a roundabout, redirect traffic down Lawson into Cemetery, have the university build their own parking, and close off the, um, Cascade Avenue from Lawson all the way down only to local traffic or something. Because I know people have been hit on that street, and it's an issue. It's a very dangerous street. And, you know, I don't know who came up with that plan, but how the, how the grass gets tall is you, it's hard to see people walking. And so that's another issue. Um, so I think, you know, the university should be able to find funding, I don't know, through the state or whatever they have to do to get the funding, but they should not be parking on the residents' streets and causing issues for the residents. It's making people not want to live in this town. And another issue is the noise from sporting events from the university. Because I'm on a hill on Oak Knoll, the sound goes straight into my windows. And so whoever's commentating on those speakers, it's going right into my house, and I'm, I'm in there with my daughter, eating dinner, and there's this voice, you know, it's like there's a voice from outside. You know, and, and I've called the university, they said they were gonna redo this, redo the sound system. It's no, it, this year, it's no, nothing has changed. It's the same, same noise, same stuff. And what I suggested to them was like bleacher speakers, so if people are sitting on the bleachers, the sound is right there, or they put like ear, um, earbuds in or something. But they said, no, they're not doing that. And I don't know, maybe you put the, I talked to an attorney, put this on a referendum or something? The mayor said, we, we haven't done a referendum in the city for how many years? I don't, I don't know what to do, but I would like for these issues to be addressed because it's, it's really bad. And it's affect, you know, my daughter's inside, and there's all this noise and smoke, you know, cars drive by, there's marijuana smoke, cigarette smoke, perfume, and all this stuff. I mean, do I move? And, um, I, I don't know what to do. And so that was the other thing. And then, oh, I would like approval for, I have talked to the city about this, the fencing. I realize that now it's six feet behind our house, and on the side streets, you have to have this, it's a limited six-foot fencing. In the front, it's three feet. I mean, I was shocked, three feet. I mean, what is that? What's the point of a fence that's three feet tall? I mean, why even have a fence at three feet? So I put some posts in, I was gonna put a fence, I didn't realize there was this limitation. My hill slants in the front, going down. So even if I'm at the top, looking down, even at eight feet, I can still see over to the university. So I think by asking permission for, to get a permit to build an eight-foot fence would be permissible because of that, the slanting hill in the front. And so, and there's a couple of other things here. I'm sorry to go on like this, it's, I've been so busy, and I've had these issues. I've been wanting to talk to the city about these issues. And so I'm sorry, it's such a long list here, but the, finally, the last issue is, you know, walking around town. I know it's a college town, and I get that, I went to college, and I know. But, I mean, some of these houses, it's like, I get you want, you know, preservation and all this stuff. But these houses are past preserving. I mean, they're falling apart. There's nothing to preserve. You know, wood that's crumbling, you can't preserve it. So I think something needs to be done with these rental houses and to, to fix up the town, because I think it really, it looks really bad to the town. And, uh, even if I walk down to the downtown, you know, it's like piles of beer cans and stuff, the houses are falling down. It's just, I don't know, I just, I envision something different, I don't really know. Maybe I'm too much of an idealist or something, but something, I don't, I don't know. These, so these are the issues. I don't know exactly how, what to suggest to go about it. I, with, um, oh, I mean, I've, the no parking, I've, um, if I can get a vote on that on Hillcrest and Oak Knoll or something, and the police, I'm happy to talk with the police to figure out a plan for the noise on, um, Cascade and everything. And the sporting events, I, I, maybe a referendum, I don't know, or some type of vote. I don't know, maybe if other people in the town are having the same issues, I would sort of be interested to know. And I think this is just bad, these things are bad for the town. The town is losing money, tax money. People aren't gonna want to live in a town that's noisy. The, the houses look like they're falling apart and all this stuff. So, you know, financially, I think it's important, these issues are important. And, um, and hopefully, they can be resolved very soon. And thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Hello. Um, I am Krista Clary. I live in Clifton Township. I'm here today because some signs showed up in my neighborhood, little white signs about 40 feet off the road, advertising this meeting in my neighborhood. So, um, they were hard to read, I just want to provide that feedback. Uh, I actually had to get out of my car, and I tried to read the sign. I ended up taking a picture and, and blowing it up. And I could tell something was happening. So I don't know who you wanted to come when you put the signs up, but I'm here because they're in my neighborhood. Um, I'm, I'm interested in what's going on with the annexation. This is happening in my community. Um, about, there's already been an increase in traffic on M. I don't know where to express my opinion, but thank you for giving me this opportunity here to do this, you know. Already at 6, uh, 1060th Street and M, it's already a dangerous road, and I anticipate that road becoming more dangerous as the traffic increases there. I don't know if that needs to be taken up with the county or the townships or the city, but I, I want to speak on behalf of myself and my neighbors, that, um, let's think about the traffic and the roads and what that does. Also, it's a, um, community, a lot of people like to walk on the roads. As the traffic picks up, it gets more and more dan- dangerous, and there are children who, it's not far, as you know, from Clifton, that little corner of Clifton Township into town. I'm interested in knowing how we can facilitate pedestrian, um, movement from our community into town and not have to rely on, on the road. Um, those are my issues. If, it's interesting, because you've got Clifton Township, River Falls Township, town, sorry, not township, in the city, and then you've got St. Croix County and Pierce County, and where is our voice when we live in that area? Where is, where do we come to express what's happening in our community? And I understand there's a lot of overlapping municipalities in that area. So I thank you for the sign. I hope there will be more signs. I hope they'll be readable, and I hope they'll include everyone who actually lives there despite the fact which side of the line that we're on, because it does impact, um, where we live and how we commute and how we are involved in this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Okay, we'll move on. First thing we're gonna do is we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance 2023-04. This is annexation of land in right-of-way in the town of Troy to the city of River Falls. The parcel identification number is, our numbers are 040-113010000 and 040-113295025. That's at County Highway U and County Highway M. And they're applying a zoning classification of A, agriculture district. And this is the second reading. Is there anybody in the audience has anything about this they'd like to say? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and open up a council hearing, and I'll take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance approving the annexation of land in the town of Troy to the city of River Falls and applying a zoning classification of A agriculture district to the subject properties.
Second. First and second, questions and comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next is ordinance 2023-05, annexation of the western portion of land in right-of-way in the town of Troy to the River Falls. Uh, the parcel information number is 040-113295101. And this is on County Highway M. And they're applying a zoning classification of R3 multifamily, high-density residence district to the westernmost portion of, and C Conservancy District to the eastern portion of the annexation area. Is there anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing, and I'll take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we adopt ordinance, uh, we're on number three, right, 2023-05.
Second.
First and second, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, uh, we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance 2023-06, amending the extraterritorial zoning map to rezone a parcel from A1 exclusive agriculture to A agriculture. Uh, the identification number is 022010310100. And this is the first reading. Is there anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Yeah, come on up.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Um, my name is Adam Tripp, and this is Kate Fisher, and we're the excited, hopefully, future owners of this piece of property. So we just wanted to be available in case there were any questions about our intentions with the piece of land and our plans to build a modest dream house up on top of a hill with an amazing view. So, um, if there's any questions, comments, um, we very much welcome them. And unfortunately, I've got a annual work trip for the next city council meeting, so I would love to attend it virtually in case there are any questions at that time as well.
Okay.
Just wanted to make ourselves available.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the time.
Yep. Is there anybody else in the audience has anything they want to say about this? Okay, so we'll, we'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing. And first reading, so if the council has any questions on this? Okay, we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance 2023-07, amending section 8.40.040 about weeds and noxious growth. There again, this is the first reading. Is there anybody in the audience has something they'd like to say about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing, and does the council have anything to ask about this? Okay? Okay, let's see. Where am I here? Okay, next, uh, next we go into request, let's see, is this supposed to be a public hearing for the, it is, okay. So we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing for, request for combination Class B liquor and Class B beer license for Castro Corporation doing business as burritoX.com, 106 North Main Street. Is there anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Okay, we'll close the council hearing, or we'll close the, what? Do you have something you want to say? Yeah, you, if you have something you want us to say to us, that, yeah, come on up, you bet.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Alejandro Castro. I reside in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. I'm the owner and manager of Castro Corporation doing business as burritoX, X.com. And I'm here just to see if you guys have any, have any questions, or you have any question about the, uh, the, uh, the concept that we're trying to operate there in that location, so.
We, we, when we're done with the public hearing, we'll go back into the council hearing.
Oh, that's what I.
And then, yep, yep.
That, that's what I want.
Okay, yeah, we know you're here. Perfect, thank you. Okay, so anybody else have anything on this? Otherwise, we'll close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing, and first thing we'll do is take a motion on this.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the request for the combination Class B liquor, Class B beer license for Castro Court, DBA burritoX.com, so that we can have discussion.
Second. Okay, we've got first and second, questions, comments?
I've got a few questions or concerns or comments for, for Mr. Castro, if I could. Mr. Castro, I normally ask, as you saw from, or will see later from, for the quick trip, uh, change of agent, I normally ask the agents three questions. I think you've already been an agent.
Yes, I have.
So I'll just ask you to reaffirm those three questions, that you have your responsible server certificate, you understand the role of an agent, and you understand that if a violation occurs and you're not there, you're still responsible.
Yes, you are.
Okay. All right. I, I've got concerns about the situation there. A couple of weeks ago, we had in front of us another person who wanted to take over as agent. I'm, my understanding is, is that the staff is having a difficult time communicating with you and receiving calls back. Are you prepared to give the staff your cell phone number tonight, so that when they call you, you will answer and they can contact you?
Yes, I think I'd be talking to Amy or Jackie from the city.
Yes.
And I actually already switched all the, uh, utilities and everything, so we're ready to go.
All right, that's good. I'm concerned about the fact that plumbing repairs happen there without a permit. That's in the past, it's been rectified, but that's not a positive thing for tonight, for, that's, that you're coming in front of. My biggest concern is the fact that it appears that you would be a straw agent, you would be the agent in name. How frequently are you gonna be here? How much time can we expect you to be here so that we have somebody instilling the culture and the, and the requirements and the, and the approach to business that we expect?
Oh, I'm gonna be managing the store.
You're gonna be here all the time?
Not all the time, but yes.
How frequently, during a week?
Uh, we're gonna be open five days a week, so I'll probably, I'll be here four days a week.
Four days a week, okay. And not just, you're not gonna just show up and say I'm here and then leave? You're gonna be there to manage, be part of the operation?
This is a new concept that I, we're trying, actually, we're using this CD as a, a, uh, we, this is a new concept. We're thinking about franchising it. So, so we are, I, I'm close to the city, so I, I'm gonna be here monitoring everything, so make sure that the concept is ready to go to the big cities, yes.
Okay. I, I've got, I've just got concerns, there seems like we've got a lot of, a, a lot of, I'm gonna use the word turbulence that's been going on at that location between the old manager, then the change, the attempted change to, to a nightclub, and now back to another concept in a short period of time. Is the building for sale? I, I've heard that the building is for sale.
I also own the building.
Right.
With a corporation called Costnero LLC.
Okay.
And, uh, well, we put it for sale because we were not sure what we're gonna do. Now, I said, well, let's get a burritoX.com here, and that's what I'm taking over. So yes, I don't think, and that's what also that I, I want to make sure that it's gonna be more, we, I'm good at making burritos. Not at dance clubs or nightclubs now. I'm here to open a restaurant, so yes.
Okay. I want you to be successful, but I'm struggling with, I'm struggling with the history up to this point. I guess at this point, I'd like to hear what my other fellow council mayors have, and I'll just turn it over to anybody else.
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor. I would like, for one, would like to see an improvement with communication with our city. And when I make decisions, I look at, are these gonna be in stone if we go forward with them? So for me, I have a question for our city's attorney. If we were to move forward tonight, uh, could we request, if communications didn't improve, the ability to change an agent later on?
I don't believe you can require the change of an agent, that would be up to the existing agent to make that request.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, here's a question I have for you as well. Um, it says in your, on, on page 40 of the packet, it talks about, um, I know it's designed to be an arcade, and then I see like, uh, tournaments where it talks about darts and pool, but it doesn't have video gaming checked. Is that just, when you, so when it says arcade, does that imply video games, or what does that actually mean?
We're gonna have like different kind of video games there too. So it was gonna be a pool tables, a darts, and yes, some video games.
So it is targeted more per younger generation?
Younger generations.
As well as families with food?
Uh, well, in the front of the dining area, yes, it's gonna be room for, my, my, my concept is a fast Castro concept. So it's more like an order, you can sit anywhere, eat, yeah, I mean, in the front. The back's more gaming, pool tables, darts, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
No, but I, I, I just wanna, I know we haven't put it to a vote yet, but I'm go, going to be voting yes on this, so, um, I'm looking forward. Um, I'm looking forward to the, you guys opening up again and giving us another opportunity to have some good food in town.
Thank you, I appreciate it, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next one, the census agenda. Uh, resolution approving request for city assistance for River Falls area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau for twenty twenty-three events. Uh, it comes a resolution approving the twenty twenty-three Wisconsin DNR Urban Nonpoint Source. And Stormwater Management Program Planning Grant Application. Uh, next one is a resolution supporting twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four legislative priorities. And last one is a change of agent for QuickTrip Store three oh one, does anybody want to poll anything?
Mister Mayor, I'd like to poll number ten.
And I move approval of consent agenda items seven, eight and nine.
Second.
First and second, questions or comments on anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mister Morrison, you polled ten.
Mister Mayor, if I could, ask the uh, the agent, the proposed agent, uh, Ms. Myers to step forward.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Tama Myers, I'm the new agent for QuickTrip Store three oh one.
Okay, everybody's curious as to which one that is, that's the one on the south end of town?
South end, yep, I'm by the university.
By the university, uh, Ms. Myers, you heard me ask, uh, the previous agent the three questions. Um, uh, do you currently possess your responsible server certificate?
Yes, I do.
Okay, uh, you understand the role of an agent?
Yes.
Okay, and you understand that if an alcohol related violation occurs, even if you're not there, it's your responsibility?
Yes.
Thank you very much, that's all I have, Mister Mayor.
And welcome to River Falls, too.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, any other questions in hearing, none, I will make a motion to approve the change of agent for QuickTrip Store three oh one.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next going on to the administrator's report. If anybody has any questions for Scott, Scott, if you have anything new for us?
Uh, I guess I'll just provide some of the statistics from the spring elections, the number of absentee voters for this election were eleven hundred and five. Uh, voters at the poll were three thousand thirty-nine, so it was a grand total of four thousand one hundred and forty-four voters. Um, that's about a fifty percent voter turnout percentage. Um, based on our eight, nearly nine thousand, um, or eight thousand eight hundred registered voters, we had a hundred and sixty-two new registrations. Um, and let's see, absentee, it was seven hundred and sixty-nine by male. And we had four hundred and two. Um. Absentee in person and thirty-two by special voting deputy absentee. Um, so a pretty good turnout for. Um, an election that normally doesn't have nearly that turnout. The upcoming events, you, it was mentioned the annual bluegrass bourbon and brews festival is downtown April twenty-one to twenty-three. There's more information at River Falls Bluegrass dot com. April twenty-second is River Falls Earth Fest at uh, noon to four at Glen Park. Um, you can search Facebook on Earth Fest, we also have, I think, a link on our city webpage, um, on the banners. There, well, Lisa was running there last time I looked. Um, so council organizational meeting, you get three meetings this month, so. Uh, you'll be meeting again next Tuesday at six thirty, that's the annual organizational meeting where you'll set committees and some other. Uh, business including bylaws and then you'll be back for a regular business meeting in the council the following Tuesday, so we'll see a couple Tuesdays in a row. Any questions I can answer?
Okay.
Dan, I have something, I'd like to add if I could. Um, for those that don't know, starting April fifteenth will be Discover the Night, um, it's. A dark sky, so we're looking to have dark skies, there's an organization called darksky.org. And they're looking to try to eliminate the light pollution and the glare and the sky glow and the light and trespassing. And the light clutter and that, and we've talked about it um privately in meetings um, amongst the. Um, council and that, but we're looking at maybe ways of reducing the amount of light that we admit. Um, in this city and, and some of the things we can do as individuals are turn off those lights that are outside that don't serve a purpose, so. Make sure that you're only lighting up the area that is required, you don't need to light up the whole neighborhood, just light up what you need to. Um, there's lights that have fixtures on them and shielding that you can do to help protect that, so. Reduce the amount of time that you have your outside lights on too, and if you don't have motion sensors and that, maybe that's the time to. Um, now, um, um, put in motion sensors into your outside lighting if you're looking for um. Uh, protection that way, but um, reduce the um, light pollution and um. Let's see if we can see those stars and the moons and the planets again, so. Um, it's been beautiful when, when you're out in the country and you see, you know, earlier this year. I saw three planets lined up right in a row, but it's hard to see that in town. Even in Little River Falls with the amount of light we throw off, but um. Um, be careful and be aware of the light that you um, pollute to um, um, our environment, that's it, Dan.
Okay, good. Okay, so I'll move on, I got some appointments I'd like to make, are you guys okay? I'd like to reappoint Mike Miller through December of twenty-five for the bid board. I'd like to reappoint Jennifer Leonard through October of twenty-five for the Board of Appeals. I'd like to reappoint Rebecca Ferguson and Carrie Heizelman. For uh, through July of twenty-six for the library board. I'd like to reappoint Jacqueline Nicom through December of twenty-seven for the housing authority. And I'd like to report Adam Gurrel through May of twenty-six through the utility advisory board.
Mister Mayor, make a motion, we accept your appointments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we have a, we got an Arbor Day proclamation, I'm gonna read real quick here. So this is proclamation for Arbor Day for twenty twenty-three. Whereas trees are a vital source in the city River Falls across Wisconsin, the nation and the world. And where else trees help to conserve soil and energy, filter our air and, and intercept stormwater runoff from entering our waterways. Create jobs through a large forest products industry, provide wildlife habitat and make our homes, cities. And countryside more livable and beautiful. And whereas human activities along with acts of nature threaten our trees, creating the need for concerted action to ensure the. Future of our rural and urban forest. And whereas each year in late April, Arbor Day is celebrated as people across the country pay special attention. To the wonderful treasure of our trees represent and dedicate themselves to the continued health of our forest. Now therefore, be resolved that I, Dan Toll, and Mayor of the city of River Falls. Do hereby proclaim April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three to be Arbor Day in the city of River Falls. And be it further resolved that I urge all citizens, citizens to become more aware of the importance of trees to their well-being. And to participate in tree planting programs that will ensure a healthy and green city and an inheritance for future generations of River Falls. Given under my hand and seal the city of River Falls, this uh, this, this eleventh day of April twenty twenty-three.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
I thought Arbor Day was the day that all the ships came sailing into the harbor.
Wait, waiting for that.
Is that what it is?